Okay, the first thing on the agenda is approval of the amendments for February the 7th, February the 14th, and February the 15th, facial meetings.
I move.
Martin?
I'll say.
Chrisley? All we just vote?
Yes.
Public comment? Lincoln County?
No, sure they didn't like this. I haven't heard from her anymore, so she was...
Okay. Mr. Sack, get on.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to speak before the board, so I want to thank you. And, Mr. Wilkinson, it's nice to see you again. So, I don't know if you remember me coming up to your Christmas tree for many years ago as an ag teacher, so...
And now with the Campbell County?
Yes, sir. Oh, that's right, you came up with Emily, right? Yeah, okay, okay. I have two different items I'd like to bring for you all for, you know, comment, to see how you all feel about some changes that we might be making at Lincoln High School. And I do believe that at least one of the items will probably require you all to vote on at a later meeting, I would suppose, if we were to follow through with it. The first item, because I think it's probably the most important, deals with academics. And I have for you a proposal. And this is to discuss the possibility of changing a grading policy at the high school to explore the option of weighting honors courses. Currently, our AP courses, our Advanced Placement courses, are the only courses that are weighted. And I believe that one of the things that's important for our students is to have high expectations and also to challenge and push students in academic coursework that is rigorous and definitely relevant, but to also prepare them better for success in college. And if you look at the second paragraph down, I have two different studies that discuss the research behind rigorous, more rigorous curriculum and coursework and the success rate of those high school students in college. While we are already offering honors level courses as well as AP courses, our honors courses are not weighted. And traditionally, honors courses are taken by students to prepare them for success in AP level coursework. And then the AP coursework and dual credit courses should translate into more successful students in college. One of the issues and concerns that I have is that I feel that our students at Lincoln County High School are at somewhat of a disadvantage because surrounding counties, that being of Mason, Campbell, Canal, which were several of the ones that I contacted to determine whether or not they were weighting their honors courses, those counties are weighting their honors courses. And so my concern is, is that if a student was to come from ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, and from the time they're in ninth grade, or they know that they want to challenge themselves academically, so they say, "I'm going to challenge myself academically. I'm going to take the hardest classes, the most difficult, the most rigorous classes Lincoln County High School has to offer, and I'm going to challenge and push myself." And they would take honors courses, let's say, as a ninth grader, honors courses as a 10th grader, maybe an honors course or two as an 11th grader, but they're definitely taking an AP course or two between their junior and their senior year. They may have a grade point average of a 4.25 because it's weighted. If that same student was to go through a Campbell County, and that would be if they, you know, had As and Bs and so on and so forth, the same student going through a Campbell County, a Mason County, or Canal County school could potentially have a higher GPA of like a 4.5 to a 4.8. And the reason is, is because of the number of weighted courses they would have taken through their high school career. And my concern is, is that when we look at students applying for scholarships and looking for financial assistance from some of our local organizations and our local scholarships that are out there, they're going to be at a disadvantage because their grade point average could potentially be less, even if they had the same grades and the same standards as some of our neighboring counties. So, I would like to explore the idea of possibly weighting our honors courses. And so, if you all have any questions, I would like to be able to answer those questions about honors level courses at this time.
When you speak of honors courses, are those across the curriculum, a variety of... I mean, give me some examples of them.
Well, traditionally, we have an AP level course per core area, whether it be English, math, science, history. There is at least one AP level course. And most of those AP level courses are in their junior, senior year. There are usually ninth grade and 10th grade honors courses. Currently, we only have honors courses in English. English and... I'm trying to think of the ninth... Actually, I think English right now is the only one that we have as an honors level course for the ninth grade. We do have several honors level courses for the 10th grade, and then we have one or two for the 11th grade. So, the goal would be is to have an honors level course per core area.
Would you repeat the core areas from the beginning?
English, math, science, and history. So, as a ninth grader, I would have the option of taking an honors level English class and an honors level history class. At this time, I'm not sure that we will have the staff to do an honors level math course for Math 1 because we have so many other issues with that right now with the transition. We would look at an honors level 10th grade course, both in English, English, history, and science. And then, as juniors and seniors, we would be offering predominantly AP-type courses for our teachers who are certified to teach AP. That would be like AP Lit, Literature, AP Language. We would look at, we're looking at an AP Geography. And these are all teachers that have gone through the certification for AP-level certification. And so, they are well aware of the academic rigor that is expected of those teachers and those courses, as well as the teachers that we're exploring for the honors level courses as well. Because, you know, if we're going to weight a course, the academic rigor needs to be there as well. And so, the expectation for the academic rigor would be in place.
So, it's more rigorous than...
Oh, absolutely. For example, I think there's an example that in the proposal there, if you have a traditional English class that may have, you know, basic, for example, they could be reading a book outside of the class while working on other skills such as writing and analysis within the classroom. It could be extra projects. It could be, you know, faster pace along with extra work, but that extra work is designed to give them the challenges they may face when they get to collegiate level courses.
Would this, that the honor graduates and their seniors, would you still have very high honors?
No, we would still have all those, yes.
Okay. Next question. If you would do this, I mean, if we would consider that and everyone would agree and so forth, would you transition this in with like ninth grade this year, 10th grade next year, 11th grade? Because I can see how you could have a difference between grade levels wherever the child's at. Why didn't you have a chance to take that honors class weighted when I sent my grade?
I do see what you're saying. My concern would be is if we were to actually transition it by grade level, I think that we would have more parents of juniors and seniors who would be upset, or even 10th graders, because they would want that same opportunity now. Do you see what I'm...
Yes.
But I do see, I do see the conflict that you're inquiring about.
I think we'd have to take a real...
That would be something you'd have to think about, but...
Something to consider.
I think that the other thing, though, is it might create a logistical nightmare for when we start transcripting. You see, when we start transcripting at the end of the semesters and when we start... Because it's, because if a student, if you, if you were to do it across the board, it's not going to affect seniors in a negative way. The graduates, you're not going to do it now, it'll be implemented for next year. But for graduates for next year, it's not going to affect them negatively because they're competing against their peers. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, their peers all have the same opportunity. They, you know, no one had more of an edge to take those honors level courses prior to for the weighted grade.
I think that sophomores and juniors...
It would, well...
What they would be?
Be the same sophomores have the same opportunity if you start next year as...
Exactly. It wouldn't be, yeah, right. So, it wouldn't be like a sophomore, if the sophomore's finished ninth grade English and they did, well, that's a bad, that's a bad example. Let's say a sophomore has finished ninth grade science, okay? I have a ninth grader this year, we did not offer an honors level ninth grade science course. Next year, they're taking 10th grade, and they decide at that point they can take an honors level biology, okay? The ninth grade entering next year would be able to take a ninth grade honors. But those students, we're not comparing GPAs among ninth graders and 10th graders for class, for, for school ranking. We don't do school ranking, we'll do class ranking, but we really don't even do class ranking until they're a senior.
In the past, maybe Jeff, have we not had weighted courses in the past?
They did years ago.
Maybe you missed...
And then there was a state policy in place for a while where you couldn't have weighted grades at all.
You could, could not.
And there was this outcry, yeah.
You could not?
Could not.
Could not.
Even our AP courses. And, you know, and teachers, administrators were saying, "Well, students are voting with their feet and not taking those courses because why risk it?"
And...
And so, and then the policy changed to allow us to do that, to enable us to weight those classes.
It became an issue where we were comparing apples to oranges with those honors courses versus the, and the high-ranking students, valedictorians, and...
That's what happened. Yes. When we had those classifications, that's when the honors was dropped because it caused such a controversy in the rigor of the courses.
Right.
That's all.
But in my opinion...
They were not equal.
Right.
An honor is one, it's not equal to honors in the other, and that's...
Oh, you're talking about, like, for example, like, an honors nine compared to, or an honors English compared to an honors history?
Yes.
Well...
Or man.
I see what you're, and I do see what you're saying, and that is a concern. And I think the concern, though, needs to be addressed by the building administrator. If my standards as the building administrator are that those honors level courses are rigorous, and if I'm doing my job to make sure that the rigor and the expectations are high, the coursework is challenging, then I don't think that there should be a problem. And that's just, that's exactly one of the things that I think that I'm trying to achieve here, is I'm trying to make sure that Lincoln County High School has the highest expectations possible, and I have the highest expectations for my students. And I want to challenge my students. But at the same time, I feel like there needs to be an incentive for those students to be challenged. And that is through, in my opinion, the challenge becomes, and the acceptance of that challenge is so that they can have an edge or something over another student in another county. A student who is wanting to go for valid, you know, valedictorian, they're going to be taking those more challenging courses because that's a status that they're wanting to achieve. But at the same time, I have to make sure that I'm doing my part as the building level administrator to make sure that those courses that are weighted, those honors courses, just as the AP courses are weighted right now, that there are specific criteria that it takes to have that course. And there's also specific criteria it takes to get into those honors and AP courses. You know, whether it be a teacher recommendation, it be an ACT plan score, the West Test 2 score, you know, if they need to have, they need to have a score of above mastery or higher on the West Test 2 in order to take an AP course. I mean, those are all things that place value back in some of the places that people have always advocated that there is no value. Students don't want to do well on the West Test. This is a paraphrasing. I don't want you thinking this is the belief I'm saying, this is what some of the misconceptions is, is that students don't take value in West Test 2 because it doesn't count for anything. Well, let's make it count for something. Let's make West Test 2 count for the ability for a student to get into that more rigorous course. You know, we're using, we're using it to determine what students need remediation the following year, so let's use it to determine, you know, where students are placed in higher, higher rigor type courses.
Have you had a chance to talk, I mean, to the curriculum team and the counselors and those...
The, actually, the school leadership team is who came up with this proposal. And that's comprised of each department head at the high school. So, that's, and that actually includes also related arts as well as career tech ed. And they were all in very much agreement. Their one concern was that we want to make sure that the rigor of those honors level courses across the board is high. So, that is a, that is a concern that was expressed, and it's something that I'm ready and willing to take on.
Just one more thing about when we did it in the past, was it done away with this of the state policy, or was it, was it a local decision to quit having weighted grades be allowed?
It was local. As I remember it, it was local.
It was what?
When it comes to honors courses, it was local. That was a local decision because we didn't feel like the rigor was there.
Was that the primary reason?
Yes.
And at that time, we had the, we had the valedictorians, the voodoo tour and that type of thing. Where the tempo of point could make a great deal of difference, and there was a lot of controversy over it. So, the schools met, the counselors and the principals and decided, "We'll do it a different way, and we won't have that controversy." And we did, frankly. But then we went to, we also went to a very high honors, high honors and honors...
You're talking about the class ranking?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. And that's, that's a big deal to a lot of people.
Well...
Yes, and it was across the state. There were issues across the state.
That's why we need to make sure there's no advantages or disadvantages.
That's right.
To implement this.
Right. And I think you actually pointed out a good point there. At that time, there was the four high schools, so the consistency was probably a little bit more difficult to keep in check.
Yes.
And we don't have that challenge now because, let's just face it, if, if the rigor isn't there, either because, and I'm taking, you know, I guess, I feel so passionately about making sure that this is provided for our students so that they can compete with our neighboring counties, that, you know, that's an expectation upon me, to make sure that my, that I am requiring my teachers to have that rigor and that level of expectation in their, in their job, in what they're performing. And I'm not going to allow just, you know, any teacher to do a honors level course. You know, I think it's something that is taken very seriously. So, the, I think that, if I'm correct, Mr. Midkiff, that this would have to be put on a board agenda to be approved or, you know, but I guess what I would, I'm trying to get my curriculum got done so we can start scheduling. And so, I would, I would, I guess I'd like to hear what you all would think of, you know, what you're thinking, so that if I feel like I need to go ahead and include it or, and say pending, pending approval, or I would just need to probably just wipe it out altogether. And I'll respect the decision of the board completely, so...
Require a policy.
My, I have to get to where I was saying, it seems, I like to get some public input. If there were negative feelings about it before, I'd like to know what the public thinks now, and then at the same time be able to get their...
You know, one way we could do this is I could put in there, this is potential policy, you know, pending, just so that it's there, so if you all decide upon it that it's already printed, and then, but at the same time, if it's not, we can just say that it was never approved.
Just a disclaimer.
Just, you're right. I mean, I can easily put that in.
Something...
I'm going to...
No, I understand.
I'm not involved either. I just want to be sure that there is... We'll cover it all the bases.
Well, I think...
We don't do this something unintentional.
I think what you'll find out, and I've heard this, is that parents of the better students is all for it. Because they think they just, well, I mean, they're not actually playing on a level playing field right now. Better students, I mean, they take these hard classes for their own benefit and for, and still end up with the same grade point average as somebody's taking easier classes. So, I think when you, if you do a survey of the parents, that you'll find that the better parent or the parents of the better student will be all in favor of them.
Well, if it's a policy, it's out on public review, right? That's the typical way that you get input.
Because right now, our policy only allows for weighted grades for AP courses.
Right. I'm saying, this would be a policy revision, so those that wanted to comment would have the opportunity to do so.
Yes, during that review.
Okay.
And no vocational classes, would any of those be weighted?
The, at this time, there is no plan for any kind of weighted vocational course. There would be possibly a Spanish III course that would be weighted, because traditionally, students only have to have the two, two years of a foreign language. But we do have quite a few students, when I say quite a few, there's about 20, that would really enjoy having a higher level Spanish course. And so, in fact, we had, this year, the plan, and I don't know what, what kind of communication broke down from the scheduling before I was hired, but there was actually a dual, they thought they were getting a dual-credit Spanish course, and that was why they enrolled. But we had a problem with the teacher certification with Southern Community College, so we weren't actually able to offer that for those students. And they were, they were a little bit, you know, bummed because they were hoping they were going to get college-level credit, and we weren't able to offer that, but...
What about, what about our surrounding counties? Do they have such a structure as this, or are we the only one without them?
The Putnam County has a similar structure to ours. The, and I only called, I only called four counties today. And the reason I called them today was because everything up until this point had always been just hearsay. I had not had any validation. I hadn't communicated with anybody, and I wanted to make sure, before I presented to the board, that the information I had was accurate. But Putnam County only honors, only waits honor, I'm sorry, AP courses. Campbell County, Mason County, and Canal County, which were the three others that I contacted, all weight their honors and AP courses. But again, I, and I couldn't get a hold of anybody at Wayne County today, so I tried and I couldn't, they didn't have, they don't have their policies posted on their website, so...
I'm not even sure we had a prom scholarship when this was changed.
But what, you're going back to what?
Do what?
I said, "I'm not even sure we had prom scholarship when this was changed," apparently. Originally, I don't think there was, there was such a thing as a prom scholarship.
Yeah.
So, it didn't affect that in any way, so...
But with students that aren't in, and I can't make a distinction, but a vocational curriculum versus...
They would still have the same opportunity to take honors level courses, though. Skilled pathway and professional pathway students have the exact same opportunity as any other student in taking the academic course, core content areas. So, for example, an automotive student could still challenge themselves academically by taking a ninth grade honors, a 10th grade honors, English, history course. They could even take potentially an AP course if the, if our scheduling would work out correctly. So, they would have the same opportunities as any professional pathway student in taking weighted coursework.
It's just in those core areas that you have to...
Right.
So, you wouldn't necess, you wouldn't have any controversy graduation time that one student...
In the skilled or the professional pathway had an edge.
Had an advantage, right?
Correct.
Because they would have had the opportunity.
The only issue that we would ever have is perhaps like an AP Literature or an AP Language course, which is the way it works right now. When it comes to our seventh period instructional periods, our seniors, like, for example, I'm going to use automotive, for example, automotive students who are seniors and they're going to be completers, they would take evening, or actually, it'd be morning courses, be first, second, third period. Well, those, traditionally, those students need like college transition math or English transition as opposed to an AP or a weighted course. And so, usually, those AP Literature or AP Language are scheduled during those times. Because if you don't do it that way, then you would have, if you were to, for example, if you were to offer a college transition English during one of those first, second, or third periods when those students are in automotive, you might have five kids. And then, what that does, that skews all your other course numbers.
We pre-ordered an...
I can probably proceed this with the revision of pending. Do you, let me ask you this, do you think that you're going to ask for it to even be put on the board of agenda to even vote on?
Yeah.
Because if you, because if you're not, if you're not, I can go ahead and exclude, I'll just exclude it.
No, I don't think so.
So, you're going to entertain it? Okay. Any other questions on honors or weighted courses? Okay, the next thing that I want to share with you all is potential lettering on the high school that identifies Lincoln County High School as Lincoln County High School. I know we've had some work for a school sign.
It's hard to read.
But I think it's also very appropriate for our school to have some recognition on the building itself. And so, I asked Paris Science of Huntington to provide you a quote for our school signage. And so, I come to you with two possibilities, and I really am advocating for both. I think the first issue is that a school needs to have its school name on it, and so that's the first one. And we went with black letters because our colors are, you know, black and blue. The, the letters, the other one that I showed you there, it says Panthers. One of the things that I think that is something that is important to me is making sure that we build a sense of tradition and pride in our school mascot and what Lincoln County High School is all about now, which is Panther pride and expectations of Panthers. In fact, we've come up with the 15 expectations for a Panther. I'd like to share that with you at some point. I didn't bring them with me, but I think something to sort of drive that home is that every day when students come into the school, they would see not only the school name as they walk in the door, but above the gym, on the gymnasium wall that you see above the athletic wing, that's where you see the blue letters and Panthers, is they would see Panthers written right there. So, everybody comes in knows that they're, they're coming into Panther country, they're coming into Lincoln County High School Panthers. And so, several of the coaches actually brought this to my attention, that they would like to see this, the lettering saying Panthers above the gymnasium. Those would be four-foot letters, very, very large. The only reason I gave you the blues is because I didn't have a really good picture of the way that might look in black, but the, the idea would be is to have the letter, the word Panthers in the large, four-foot-tall black letters. They're printed in blue. I didn't like the blue. I thought the blue looked like a Walmart sign, so...
Now, that says three.
I'm sorry?
This says three foot.
That was, and that was, the reason that is, is because that was the original quote I had. The, I don't know if you all brought the original...
I have, it's on my desk.
But the, the current one is for four-foot black letters, but I printed that off because it showed you a good profile of where those letters would go. The other one didn't show.
This one here, Brian. Now, on scale...
I believe it's 18 inches.
Well, that's what this is, 18. I'm just trying to think now, you're saying that there would be four feet, there, four feet letters, right?
It's the Panthers, Panther.
Just Panthers.
How large would these?
18 inches.
So, these would be 18 inches. Is this kind of at scale, the way it would be?
That is pretty much at scale, yes.
Way it would look?
And that one is, that one right there is actually at scale at three foot, so they're actually...
This guy here?
Actually, no, those aren't, that is not the scale.
This one is...
That is not, because I've seen the black one, and the black one...
But this one, that would be pretty much the way this one would look.
Yes, right.
You don't think 18, it would be better, but would be with the 18 inches?
I think, I think it would, I think it would become, my personal, and I'm not a designer, but my concern would be that it would overpower the windows and the...
It would be a margin between the top of the windows and the roof.
It would be, yeah. That scale would be pretty good.
What's that?
Right up here or...
Don't tell me there's a spelling error.
Yeah, yeah, there's a spelling error.
In what?
Lincoln...
No.
Not on the side.
Oh, dummy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Not on the side.
Those things have happened.
That's free.
And I, my, my plan is is to pay this for out of my school levy money. It's, it's for, for both of them, it's about $6,500 installed.
Lifetime, or a lifetime, I don't know.
I've assumed, I think so.
Three.
I shouldn't have said I assume.
How are these attached to the building?
I think that they go in with like lag bolts, and then they have some sort of mounting hardware behind them.
I'm just saying...
I was thinking it would be important, but I don't, I'm sure stainless steel would be terribly expensive for that.
Well, you know, listen, I actually thought about like brushed nickel is what I, I had thought about, like that sort of a metal look.
If you get corrosion and rusting, you can imagine what that would look like.
Yeah, that's right.
I see, I do see what you're saying. The, I had asked about that, and actually, with the color is what I was taught, was what I was referring to, but they had indicated that it might blend in with the building too much. That was, that was, because I had actually thought about that, and they'd said that, they said that it probably would not show up very well. One of the things I can do is I can make sure that what they're using is stainless or some, some sort, something that's not going to rust behind it. That's a good, I never thought about that. But I, like I said, I think that it would be very impressive to be able to come in and not only see the, the school sign, but, you know, the, the name of our mascots, because, again, I think that, and I truly do believe, I've been at the high school for five years said that it probably would not show up very well. One of the things I can do is I can make sure that what they're using is stainless or some, some sort, something that's not gonna rust behind it. That's a good, I never thought about that. But I, like I said, I think that it would be very impressive to be able to come in and not only see the, the school sign, but you know, the, the ma, the name of our mascots, because again, I think that, and I truly do believe, I've been at the high school for five years now, and about six months as the leader. And I am truly, truly seeing some, some true school pride starting to take place. And I think that that's a direct result of our S3 grant, the school improvement grant that we have taking place, the constant emphasis on expectations, the consistency with discipline. We're starting to see some really, really good effects, and we're rewarding our students also for that behavior, so. And actually, I'll be honest with you, the students, the students actually came to me about the school sign, or the, the name on the outside of the building. They, they came to me, and they'd actually come to me about colors, they were, they wanted to know, they wanted to know why there wasn't more school colors in the building. So we've been trying to work on that, but they, they wanted to know why we didn't have a school name on the outside, and I told them I'd work on that for them, so.
So this is gonna be black?
That would be black. Unless you want blue, but I wasn't a big fan of the blue.
Looks odd.
I said, I said it looked like a, just from the picture, it looks very commercial, yes. I just sort of want some feedback, see if we can't send it to Birdie. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be school levy money, so, and then maybe that's an issue, I don't know. But if not, I'll gladly accept county funds.
A grime up here of Jim, that's the same color brick as this, isn't it?
No, but it's darker.
It is a darker brick.
But it's not that dark, it, that picture is very, it's not a very good representation. It's, it's a slightly darker, but it's not the black, the black book of...
And that's other picture gone, you can see.
Yes, you probably could.
Yeah, you can see.
Cause there's another wall in that picture, that thing.
Oh, I see, okay, and it's that color?
Mm-hmm. A little bit red.
See now.
On both sides, you can see it actually.
Four feet don't show up. I hope they...
It's a 20, it's a 25, it's a 25 foot wall. So it's a really tall wall, so.
Is it the main, the main wall, or is it the side?
If you're, if you're looking at the high school from the flagpole, so there you go. So that's the act. This is the office, your office?
That's, that's where the offices are located.
Now, I think that's big, great, as far as I'm concerned.
It's a good idea.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your time.
That's all you have?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to administrative items. Need a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
Briefly.
Say.
Worbs, almost forgot your name, Larry.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Okay, Trish, you want?
Okay, on A, Mr. Basden is willing to design the transcripts, I wanna say design, put more information on our transcripts. Mr. Daley and the counselors went to a training in Campbell County, Mr. Basen works for Campbell County. And they have a much more information-driven transcript, and the counselors had attended some type of training he had, came back and wanted Mr. Daley to take them to, I think they went to Huntington High School to see how they do their transcripts. And so he was willing to come here and do what he needs to do to help our counselors get our transcripts updated more, that will have the school logo on it, but much more information, much more of a professional transcript.
Is it, I've seen a template, is that, we're talking about a software template?
He's working through, we just said, inside the system to make this change.
But it's on computer, is it?
It is.
A template?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this just a one kind of thing that he does, and then future ones will?
Yes, then we'll, we'll be able to, they'll be able to do it.
Well, he's, on the contract, it says $300 for the completion of service, and the service may last from February to June. So that's just when he has time to come up and work on it?
Well, when he comes and he'll, I think he does it in phases, you know?
Takes time to do the other thing to do.
Okay. And he's just gonna earn $300 by doing all this? That's, that's a good deal.
Yes. Mr. Daley thought it was a pretty, good deal. B, these students will be going to, for Harts PK8 to Williamsburg. There are 48 students, fifth grade, they'll be going on the charter bus, the PTO, and will be helping with fundraising to pay for the expenses. C, Hearts PK8 students will be going to Cincinnati, Ohio to visit the Union Terminal. This is on a Friday, they will be returning, it's a one day trip, 48 students. This will be paid through the school activity fund, through the levy. As a history and science, actually, I think Charlene looked that up today.
Yeah, we had to look it up.
We wanted to, to check it out. According to the architect, it's one of those, is it the architect that was one of them?
It's a national historical landmark, it was a training terminal at one time, several, several years ago.
But now it's a block?
Yeah, it's a museum, National History of Science.
Artifacts from Pompeii?
Yes.
Now, when you said we're using county funds, is this the, like an allocation that that school has?
That school gets.
She's a part of their levies?
Yes, they are. D, the following adult students be riding the school bus.
Is that G there?
Yes.
Yes, it is. E, this is a student that will be observing in a class, watching how the teacher modifies their lesson plans for variety of strategies and everything for students. There's no information from students that they'll be seeking just from the teacher and how they run their classroom. F, the following adult students to participate in designated classes at LCHS for the remainder of the school year. I think Ms...
Have a name, add that, James Davis.
And this designated class is the Teen Parenting Initiative. I think we discussed before about additional...
They gonna have any questions? Okay, how do you vote?
Yes.
All yes. Okay, we'll move to finance. Martin? I have a second?
Yes.
Briefly. Okay, Birdie?
Okay, we have scheduled invoices, $1,94,236.39. I should've kind of ran out of that. I have all the invoices, want to look at those afterwards, I'd be happy to stay, or you can ask me a question.
You know, I have a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll just go afterwards.
Okay. Item B is to purchase $73,700 of computers and monitors from RESA for the New Hearts PK8 building.
Trish, can I ask you a question about that, Birdie? Is that 100 computers, 100 hard drives and 100 monitors or what? I mean, it's, it's here, but I can't understand the terminology enough, you know?
It says 100.
It's 100, I know, but what do you, what is it?
Yes, it would be 100 monitors at 119 inch monitors, and then 100 computers.
Okay.
And it's, they're just listed separate.
Okay.
But it's joined together to make a computer system.
Okay, thanks.
Item C, since we changed our school calendar this year, it's created a lot of hardships in payroll, Trina doesn't have enough time to process payroll. So we've made a change, and the pay dates are still the same, so there's no change in pay dates, regular employees will still get paid for their 10 days, we will have one pay period where the subs will get paid for nine days. And we checked with Department of Labor, and everything's good with that.
But the pay days themselves are the same?
The pay dates are the same, it's just the number of days in the pay dates. For an example, Steve, originally we had one pay period running from March the 20th through April the 9th. Well, now we're gonna make that March the 20th through March the 30th. But, but you know, we got some spring break and different issues in there, and so just changing around a little bit to have more time in payroll, payroll department to process that. You know, there's a couple pay periods where there's only two days to process. Then rolling into next year, once we see what the school calendar's going to be, you know, we went through this one year hardship, you know, maybe we can tweak it a little bit and so it'll be smoother in payroll department. Just, you know, we've had the school secretaries out there entering data, and it's really, really been hard to find it on Trina to try to get payroll done. Okay, the next item is budget supplements. Now, this is the first time that I've brought budget supplements to the board, and I have been doing them, but I just have been, say behind, that I haven't been able to present this to the board. Now, budget supplements were, it's changed the method of how we were accustomed to doing that, you know, I'd give you the green sheet, and it would have all the tables on it, and we'd send it to the State Department. So we kind of individually send items up now. So what I have prepared for you guys, and I handed it out, is this sheet, and it's, it says budget supplements and carryovers, it's the one with all the numbers on it. Okay, so this is all the new money that has come into the system. Everybody got it? Like the first item would be all goods, budget journal entry 100. And if you'll just look, you can actually see all the new money that's came in. We'll start with fresh fruits and vegetables at Hearts Primary, fresh fruits and vegetables West Hamlin, and the next column over will tell you what the amount of their grant, grant is. Like you've got $12,000 for Hearts Primary, $26,000 for West Hamlin, $7,500, everybody got it?
It's supposed to get three regions.
To be green sheet.
Was everybody got it? So, and that just lists all our new grants and the amount of each grant. Now, some of them, you'll see that there, there will be a negative in it, like if you'll go down to line 11, Title I Adjustment to Actually, remember how we talked about some of these grants, federal money's been pulled back on us, so you're gonna see some negatives there. If you look down to 24, percent's a negative also, but that was just to remove some gear up money that was no longer available for use. And then if you look all the way over to column J, that's where our operating budget is in total, all funds at any given time. And if you'll turn over to page three, at the very top, line 90, column J, our current budget is $52,487,000. That's all funds. So we're dealing with lots of money. Okay, is there, and I just, this is a really, this is the best way to present it to you guys, I could give you guys these pages and pages of printouts, which would be not mean a whole lot to you guys.
The only thing I'd like is if we could in the future to see this ahead of time.
Yeah, and I've just, you know, it's just been, we, we just had a lot of sickness in finance.
Well, I understand.
It's just hard getting back on your feet.
We can just see it, maybe the board meeting prior or something?
Oh, oh, you would, okay, instead of, okay.
Instead of seeing them tonight and voting on them tonight, I'd like to be able to look.
Now, we gave you the totals, but not what they were actually pulling.
Right, I, I, we had funds here, but I had no idea what any of them were.
But that's all new grants that have came into our system so far. All right, then I also...
Can you clarify something, say?
Yes, okay.
Okay, so down here on number 37, midway playground, that was by a grant that their playground...
Yeah, so this is correct.
All of this is new money this year?
Uh-huh. And actually, if you, you know, if you want, want me to take a minute, if you'll look at line 6, at the very top, that's what our beginning budgets were, like in Fund 1-1, when I prepared the budget, we started out with 33.4 million. And then if you follow that all the way down, you'll see the new items that went into the Fund 1-1. And then the next one is our Fund 4-1, 4-1, which is our improvement project, which is mostly the Hearts PK8. We started out with $25,000, and then we kind of, you'll see a roll over, you see that $3.6 million, that's just the carryover from last year to this year. If you go on over to column H, that's our special projects, which is our Title I's and Tu's and food services, so we started out with $6.8 million on that one. And if you look at column I, that Fund 7-1, that's our, what we refer to as our Obama money, or Aura, yeah. So we didn't, you know, I had a zero beginning balance in that, and we just went down, so we started out in our proposed budget with $40,396,708, and we've added to, and so that's every grant that's went into our system. Now, one, one I want to give to you, information, is our transfers. Which is the, this one. This is a half a page of numbers.
I, I have.
I didn't give that.
Okay, so this is transfers, and, and so what I just did for you guys is just kind of give you which fund is actually doing the transfer. It's no change of money, it's just changed, it might've been in a supply account, and now we want to change it to a computer, we're gonna buy computers, or maybe it was in travel, and now we want to do supplies. So that just tells you what program we were doing the transfers in. So no money changing hands, just journal entries. Speaking of, did you see OPEB?
No, no.
Should I go ahead and talk about OPEB for a minute, Trish? Okay, since I'm on the floor. I guess the governors did sign a deal to address the OPEB issues partly. So I wanted to let you guys see where we stood in Lincoln County. And you put them talk about their, they are addressing the formula employees, not the non-formulas and not grant people. So when we prepare our financial statements, we have to reflect on our financial statements, the part that is formula, that part is non-formula. So that's the first part of this handout that I had gave you. So when I closed books on June 30th, and I did my financial statements, the formula liability for OPEBs for Lincoln County was $6,95,136. So that's the part that we can expect to take off from our books. But it's not gonna give us any extra money, so don't think, don't get excited. I'm taking a liability off my books. Okay. Now, we are still going to have a liability for the non-formula people of $1,523,784, which hasn't been addressed, and I would expect some guidance from the Department of Ed. And I think they'll probably get their heads together and give us, you know, here's what we think we're gonna do on all this. But as of yet, I have a party thing, and...
And these non-formula people are those people that we are over, you know, those overreach people that we...
So this whole thing's really numbered and resolved as far as local boards are concerned?
Is this cumulative?
This number that I, the $7.6 million is a cumulative number.
What about the non-formula number, is that just for this year, or is that cumulative?
That's cumulative.
Okay, okay.
Now, and then non-formula does include the, the special project people, the Title I, Title II's. Anybody that's not a formula is a non-formular. Now, this number's subject to change because I don't think anybody actually went in and said, "This is exactly what it is," you know? So, but these are numbers coming from PA, and so they're gonna be real close.
In other words, on June the 30th, we owed a million for the non-formula.
Yes, $1.5 million.
More than that.
Yes, actually, yes, it is, yeah. So, and, and it's, yeah, it could be.
Okay, okay.
So what I wanted to do, I went on down, cause... So, what I wanted to do, I went on down, 'cause I must have known Fred was gonna ask this question.
He did.
So, to just give you an example, like, the first year that we had to record OPEBs was oh-eight, oh-nine. Of course, the state kicked in a good chunk of money, so we only had to expense a half a million dollars for everyone on that particular year. Okay? Now, the next year, we rolled into nine-ten, they wasn't so generous and didn't have any money, so they didn't kick in very much. So, we booked three-point-six-six-six million. And then that brought us up to a four-point-one million balance. Okay? Then the fiscal year that we just ended, we had to book three-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-two-eighty-six, which brought us up to the seven-point-six million. So, I just wanted to give you an idea of what, how much it is each year.
And we have not been laying any of this aside?
No, we, no, it's, it's simply a book entry, it's a liability, and it affects, it offsets the fund balance, which throws us into a negative in the fund balance. So, you know, like I said, even if the one's taken care of, we still have another issue to take care of.
If you, if you're all understanding that they're gonna address this, or hopefully will address it?
The non-formula.
Department of Ed or somebody?
They will, Department of Ed will, will give us, tell us how to handle it, and probably can keep us on the same page on what to do with it. And they may, you know, I, I, I really think, uh, your, the federal grants are, you know, they may come out with a ruling that says, "Okay, you guys, Title One, you're gonna have to kick in a little bit," or, um, Special Ed, you're gonna have to kick in a little bit, but, and I'm speculating only, but.
Right, I understand.
This is the first time I've heard the difference, I mean, the difference between formula and non-formula.
That's, that's why I kept expressing those overreach people. We, they could say to us, "You're gonna have to pay your non-formula."
Well, they could argue, those are county employees.
But it sounds like to me that.
Maybe say that to us.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, those are the issues with, with what, uh, you know, concern, concerns me, you know, if, if we've got these people, which are county employees, as you said, Steve, then we would be responsible for that dollar amount. They wouldn't let us write that off.
For Mr. Wilkinson's benefit, um, where, where are we over now, about forty?
Five, was it forty-five?
Forty-four to forty, forty-four, forty-five, or right now, this year, this is.
Really?
People.
People.
People, yeah, peoples, peoples. Yeah.
We were over that many.
So, of course, you know, then, you know, we know that they're not, the legislature, the bill they designed is not gonna address those, so that, that's gonna be a.
I understand.
A liability that will be. So, anyway, since this finally came to light, I thought I would, uh, it'd be, you know, information you guys would want to see. Okay?
Aren't you gonna talk about your?
I couldn't nail these things.
Oh, I thought you nailed those out there.
No, I couldn't, I was just.
Okay.
Couldn't afford to. Well, I guess.
And the FedEx.
This is your financial statements from July.
Okay.
Almost do.
Yes.
Get your.
She's, she's doing that.
I'm, that's July.
Well, like I said, I'm just getting caught up.
She's carrying that.
There must be something wrong with me.
I don't know what she gets there. I want to get up from. Mr. Wilkinson, she said, because she knew you were coming, she wanted you to have something to bring.
I'm glad I'm on the trail.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I'm gonna do it real.
I know, they definitely lost that a year.
I think we lost.
We should have given that military.
Okay, so that this is caught up on financial statements and budget supplements and budget transfers.
Two oak trees.
Yeah, two oak trees. And I could've gave you a lot more.
That's just fine.
Yeah, I'll be good enough.
This should be twenty-eleven, wait, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, ready to vote on finances?
Yes.
How do you vote? Yes?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Personnel schedule, Trish?
Yes, and as you can see, it's a very short personnel schedule. We have a formative extracurricular personnel, there are three, and one leap of access. And that's it for this time.
On the tracker, is this the only school that's actively pursuing this right now?
Yes, yes.
Also, we didn't drop those, you could have been.
For the other schools, in case they want.
Yes.
I, I did hear today that downed elevating, being interested in building a track.
Okay. But the time that posted came, then that's it.
We'll provide you a place for the month.
Yeah, of course, we didn't have a motion to pick it up, no. I'll make a motion, I'll say briefly. I don't have a second here.
What's that?
How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah. Okay, number two, fine. Parking, that's the thing I. Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, if you look at the drawing that I give you, and my chicken scratching there, you'll see, uh, uh, Items One, Two, and Three, the small areas there are, which are closer to the school. And I've got the number of spaces that each area would, uh, would give us, and then, uh, that's the priority, which, uh, they like, they don't like to walk any further than they have to be at the school, so they, they like those areas that are close to the school. And, and the total cost, estimated cost of those first three areas are, um, eleven-thousand dollars. And the cost of the big lot, which is the sixty-by-two-hundred-and-twenty-five area, uh, the estimated cost of that would be nineteen thousand. Uh, the add in, there's an add in the paper now that is asking for bids to do March first. And this is. Where you found the space, you can get forty-four more spaces out there? That's, that's behind the existing big parking lot, that's gravel in that area right behind it. That'd be another sixty-six more space. Now, what you could do, and what, what that would allow you to do is drive in the middle of that big lot, just like the existing lot that is there now, and you could park on both sides. Uh, if you wanted to cut that area down, you could probably save another six thousand. Of course, you're gonna lose twenty-two spots, but you could, uh, you could cut that area down, uh, to, to forty by two-hundred-and-twenty-five, and just park on one side, the side closest to the existing blacktop, if you wanted to spend, say, twenty-four thousand instead of thirty-five total. And that's six inches, uh, what they would do is they'd take out the soil to get, to build up six inches of stone, total stone. They'd put filter fabric down, put the soil that they take out in the low culvert area, where we like, we'd like to have some dirt anyway, to level that area up to the right of the cemetery. Uh, and then I've listed, they'd use three-inch of, uh, number four limestone, two inches of crush-and-run, and then top that with one inch of number eight, which is a small, smaller, uh, gravel, so that they wouldn't track the crush-and-run on the existing blacktop years back, and it would look a lot nicer. But you'd have six inches of, of, uh, stone total. Anybody got any questions? Any questions?
Not about this?
Oh, no. You got surprises for me.
This, this would be, this nine and seven and six, that be reserved, or do you have any idea?
Um, she's talked about, uh, like, having some special areas for, say, Teachers of the Month, or whatever, but I doubt that she would use those areas because there's some closer areas in front of the school that's blacktop, she would probably, probably use that area for special parking, so no, that would, I don't, I've not heard her mention of anything designated.
Is this needed for big crowds, bulkings?
Yes.
Because they have had.
Not for day-to-day school, school days?
Yes.
Right.
Of course, like I said, they don't like to walk any further than they have to. And there's three areas, there's three small areas would give them some additional parking for teachers that would be closer to the school.
You know, right off the number of spaces of effort that, once this would be done, how many would be?
Seventy-two now, I think.
Yeah, there's existing, I think it's seventy-two. And you'd, you'd be adding.
Sixty-six, more.
Uh, forty-three, fifty-six, is that right?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, okay, yeah.
I've had a year. Yes.
Six, sixty-six.
That's an additional sixty.
Yes.
I got seventy-two now, I said.
And they've had a couple, but events, uh, with, you know, schools that are pre, uh, that attended the, uh, basketball games, and they, they've had some difficulty as far as parking.
So, if I get out here and walk, do you hear my walking across dirt or sidewalk?
No, there's a sidewalk there.
Okay, so.
There's a sidewalk there, but it goes past the, uh, it goes right in front of the cemetery.
Okay.
And it would, it would adjoin the existing large blacktop area that's further from the school. No, why?
Hey, Dana? Hey, everybody.
Not that easy, huh?
Wait, boy.
Not that easy.
What about the fence out back of the school, then?
The fence is completed.
Is it complete?
It is.
Good. Well, I think maybe you told me that later.
Well, I knew it was almost complete.
Oh, okay.
It is complete.
Now, I just, I saw your ad in the newspaper about the high school walkway.
Yes.
What, what do you think about that?
Well, there's been.
Time frame, right?
There's been several inquiries, uh, four or five. I had to run that particular ad three weeks instead of two because of the federal requirements, and I had to put it in the Charleston Gazette also. I don't recall the exact date when those proposals are, are due. Uh, we have been told by ZMM that they would consider, um, doing that project for no charge. Uh, I have talked to Mr. Harpold at the Department of Highways today, and he says that if, if our group of people that evaluate, the architects and engineers, would decide that that's what we wanted to do, that that would be an option for us.
I didn't tell him I wanted to write.
Yes, he did suggest also that we get that from ZMM in writing, and that it spell out that they would also oversee the actual construction and do those kind of things also, and so that is an option, and which would allow us to either, one, be under budget, or two, maybe have some additional blacktop areas for the wheelchair, uh, areas, uh, there around where the soccer field is, it could allow us to do a little bit more there, if that's what the board would wish. Pursue that. Now, that wasn't too bad. I thought she was gonna hit me real soon.
I'm thinking, I can.
Ah!
Everybody got anything else?
If it gets too tough, I'll just say it's not only you.
Seems like I've heard it been done before.
He's learning.
I'm learning.
He's learning.
You wait till you see the Mexicans.
I know I shouldn't have opened my mouth on that.
Thank you, Dana.
Well, you're welcome.
You got anything for Eric, if you want? Um, I want to speak to this too. Okay. I was just going, I know you, you all attended the conference, and I apologize that I couldn't be there. Would rather be with you all than where I was. But I think, uh, there might be some information that you all gathered that you might want to, to share, I think that would be helpful. Donna, do you want to start with what you?
Sure. Uh, I sat in on the committee for School Board Effectiveness Standards at our conference, and, uh, and this is a draft of some standards that a committee has put together, and on page two and three, the standards are in, uh, the first one, the standards would be in leadership advocacy, and number two is relationships, three, accountability, four, quality improvement, and five, board operations. And what they want to do is come up with a set of general standards that could be used for the foundation for board training and development, for board decision-making, and for board self-assessment. You know, yearly, we do a self-assessment of, on certain standards. Well, now, the School Boards Association is devising its own set of standards, which hopefully will be accepted by the State Board, and, uh, and that we'll be able to use. So, the idea is, it's better to come up with your own standards, especially based on research. So, so, again, this is a draft at this point. My understanding is that they will be refined and honed and go through more committee meetings, and next year, they'll be, we'll be using these standards, okay? Or something based on them, so.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Steve, do you want to?
Well, uh, one, I guess, the truancy presentation, I think, is very, uh, something all of this really, I thought that was one of the better presentations, and one that certainly affects us all. I know Mr. Huff, or Mr. Midgibbs and I, they're, I do it every time. But, uh, we talked about that.
Slap.
At the, while we were, during the, uh, that session, of course, you know, Chief Justice Davis was there and all that, that was a good one, and then, I don't remember the circuit court judge.
Oh, well, he's.
Whatever circuit that he was with. I, I just think that's something, certain, I, the one thing that they talked about where there was a correlation with the vocational offerings decreasing and the dropouts increasing, uh, I think that's something we've heard from a lot of people here recently, and it just seemed to strike a chord with me, that there it is a black and white, you can see what effect it's had. I thought that was one, ones I enjoyed the most, and hopefully, uh, we'll see they pick up throughout the state and we have addressed some of those issues of truancy, because they certainly are a problem.
Fortunately, uh, I was able to attend that, not that one, but one that they had when they were going around the state. Uh, Mr. Curry, uh, we had some principals that attended, um, in Huntington, as well as, uh, Mr. Prichard, their attendance director, uh, you know, which was, you know, very helpful for us to know what's going on elsewhere. We know that it's a problem, not just statewide, but nationally, so I agree with you, that, that was a very powerful, you know, and it's right there in front of you, black and white.
Yeah, I think, uh, one of the things is that the drug rate is so high, and that has a direct relationship on the dropout rate, and, and also the people the judges see in court. I think you said around eighty-five percent of his cases were in some way connected to drugs.
And, and lack of literacy.
Right, yeah.
So many, what, eighty percent of the prison population cannot, are not functionally literate.
Right, yeah. Now, that, that sort of surprised me there.
So.
With all guys together.
Yes. Students are not successful in school, they, they misbehave, and they drop out as soon as they can, and they go to other endeavors, and that.
Well, you know, if things don't change, it's gonna get worse, because these students are gonna be parents pretty soon, and.
Sure.
Want to drop out of school now, well, you know, kids are more likely to drop out of school.
It's not a rosy future for that.
Right.
Uh, Justice Davis is visiting the courthouse tomorrow to talk about truancy.
Justice Davis is visiting the courthouse tomorrow to talk about truancy, meet with the local judge, with Mr. Hope, privately, but I think she'll be available for the media afterwards.
Shawnee, have you seen a copy of that book, Robin Davis and?
The PowerPoint.
No.
I think, I think I have two of those books, I'll bring you one. Is that powerful? Yes, it is.
Yes, it's really good information.
Has anybody got anything else?
What about the school building authority? I didn't get to go to that, and I'm interested in what was said. Are we, are we gonna get less money, more money, or the?
Less money.
Less money, and what, the criteria changes, or?
Well, what he said was, they didn't think there was gonna be any money for the next two years.
Yeah.
But the circumstances, they were able to obtain some funding, not to what, fifty million dollars?
Forty or fifty, I think, forty.
For what, for the next ten years?
Was that what I said, Jeff, was that what you said? Yeah. But they didn't think there was gonna be any money, the, the way they do that, but there won't be that much money, which is not a lot in relationship.
No, it's only fifty-five calories.
But the process will stay the same, I mean, as far as you know, okay?
One thing that he did say that, that I think affects us, is he was talking about this local effort, and how that he realized that it was difficult to pass school bonds, but that they consider those things, and that even if you attempt to pass a school bond and you're not successful, at least the next time you go to the school building authority, you take, you know, we've made an attempt, we're trying to do this. But they, they obviously encourage and expect you to do locally, the way you can. And there was all kinds of jugs, but I can't remember.
I'll pass on the jugs.
Anything else? No, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn until March the sixth at 5:00 PM.
Now, do we have student hearings and personnel hearings? An expulsion hearing and personnel?
No.
Just the students?
Well, maybe.
If he asks for one. It's what we got to let her on, right?
Okay. I move.
Martin, Wilson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.